Court order, Public Works Committee, roll call please.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Before I ask for approval of the minutes, I'd like to take a moment of silence for passing of Ruth Wiggins. She belonged to our Wooddale Historical Society. She passed away this morning, so if you don't mind, one moment of silence, please. All right, we'll carry on with approval, any approval minutes for regular meeting February 8th.
Make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Report recommendation for change order of ALAM Concrete Contractors to reduce the amount for the Ash Avenue median improvement, not to exceed, not, when the amount of $9,237.18 from $42,885.5 down to $33,647.87 is my motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
This is a report recommendation for approval of the final payment request to ALAM Concrete Contractors for the Ash Avenue median project and not to exceed amount of $6,380.35.
Second.
So, motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items for further consideration, you have City Hall Decorative Bollards, March 8th, NPS, NPDES, IGA, DuPage County, March 8th, Tall Oaks Pond, March 8th, engineering standards in April, and the Irving Park Road, streetlights, winter and spring. Anything else to be added to the agenda? All right, you have a motion for adjournment?
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, I'd like to call the Finance and Administration Committee meeting to order. Please have the minute taken or note that same people are present. Up first, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last Finance and Administration Committee meeting on February 8th.
I'll make their motion.
Who have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, reports and recommendations. Everybody at home, grab your popcorn. We're going to pass this off to Brad for our annual budget review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So again, high level as we've done the past few years, the slides that we have, that were in the packet last Friday that we're going to put on the screen, are kind of some summary information of the city as a whole, then the general fund as a whole, each operating department, and then each individual fund as we go along. Obviously, in the budget book themselves, there's the tabs for each of the departments, each of the funds, and those to the greatest extent possible after the information, the first 10 to 12 slides. Each slide will generally correlate with a tab in the book. So if there's any questions on any of the specific line items for each department or each fund behind the tab, when we're on that slide, that would be the most appropriate time to ask the question. Just that way, we're not going from page 6 to 90, back to 80, you know, just not bouncing around, try to be as systematic as possible on it, so.
Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley?
So, I want to make sure I understand something. We're going to go to the pages, but we're not going to go to the book. We're not going to go through the book. Am I understanding that correct? Unless there's a question from the slide.
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, so if just, for example, I'll pick on the manager here for a second. If we get to the administration slide, and you have a question about the administration department, like one of the line items within the administration department, then that would be the best time to ask a question about one of the line items within the administration department.
So just to clarify, we have tabs, which thank you. I don't know why that was even a question of adding tabs, but we kept tabs in this year to make it easier. And what I, if I understood you correctly, as chairman, keep our questions to questions outlined within these specific tabs. So if it's an administration question, hold it for administration?
That's the preference.
Okay.
Just, just for clarification, I would like to thank staff for getting me my budget book this morning. Because I wasn't here last week.
Okay.
So. Yeah, thanks. So, my, my problem is, I didn't go through this book because I didn't have it.
You have, you have city email, correct, like the rest of us?
Half the time.
Okay. Well, I know we got an electronic copy over a week ago.
But people like paper copy, too.
Yeah. Did, did you, I'm not here to debate, and we can, you can debate with the city manager, but I'm saying if you needed a paper copy, you've been doing this a lot longer than many of us, why didn't you ask the community service officer to drop one off?
It doesn't matter, because the packets get delivered to my packet every single week.
Right.
This week, I didn't get a budget book, so it doesn't matter. So, let's just carry on.
So, city manager, Mirmes, any, any comment, any, any reason why he didn't get a white glove delivery?
It's not a matter of white glove.
I'm busted. It was a massive conspiracy theories to make sure he didn't get to read his budget on time.
It seems like we have that problem, my mic doesn't work either, right?
That's not a coincidence.
Alderman Roy Wesley, do you feel comfortable moving forward? I know you have them in front of you today. I, I will make, I'll make a point to allow you to ask additional questions. A lot of this is a recap of the CIP, but if you have any, just please raise your hand. I'm happy to accommodate where we can. Fair?
I guess.
You're very tenured, so you know this stuff better than most of us, so I'm sure you won't have as many questions as probably a peon like me. So, if you have any, just please raise your hand. All right, let's, let's move along.
Okay. Going to the first slide, and the first number of slides is kind of high-level review stuff. Again, there's six types of funds that the city has. There's a general fund, which is our main operating fund, which is, you know, administration department, finance, community development, police department, streets, et cetera. There's the special revenue funds, where those revenues are only statutorily restricted to a special purpose, such as motor fuel tax, the tourism, the hotel tax, narcotics forfeiture, et cetera. There's the capital projects funds, which is the CIP by and large, which we talked about in January. There's the internal service fund, which is the SURF, which is the capital equipment replacement fund, the sinking fund to try to smooth out the purchases. The enterprise funds, which are the business-type funds, which is the metro lot, sanitation, and the water and sewer fund. And the trust and agency funds, which is the police pension fund and the SSA fund. Probably next year, I'll take this slide out, because it's, it's old enough. Quit beating this horse, the GASB-54 implementation with the five fund balance categories. You know, just know that they're, they're for a reason, but by and large, we have everything where they need to be, and everything's accounted for properly between the budget function and the audit function. So, just more technical classifications for the accountant types out there, not necessarily germane for, for us to get into. So, we have 15 active funds in this year's budget. Five have a proposed budget increase, 10 have a proposed decrease. The decreases, by and large, are all planned for. There's currently no structural issues with any of the operating funds, being the water fund and the general fund. Capital spending, again, we talked about the CIP back in January. Just to recap, you know, the big ticket items this year, the clock tower, the closeout of the Wooddale and Irving safety intersection improvement, continued water main and drainage improvements, including the ComEd one, and some other ones that we're still waiting on, and then the community beautification projects that we're undertaking that were included in the CIP. So again, I kind of alluded to this in the beginning. Each department or fund has its own sheet here in the slide deck, and then also its own tab. If there's any expanded level items, they'll be on green. This year, we went with a nice lime green instead of a mint green that we've had in the past, and a red, which some people might say is more of a pink than a true red, but the true red on black ink doesn't necessarily pop as well, so we want the lighter, lighter hue. And we'll try to gain consensus, make sure there's no further questions on each section before moving on. Again, like I said, that way, we're not trying to the greatest extent possible not hopscotching back and forth. There might be a little bit. That's understandable, but try to, try to keep it to a minimum. So, we'll go through an overview of the entire budget, high level, and then just continue to move through the book, the general fund, and then special revenue funds, so on and so forth, the bottom two tabs, February 22nd, that's tonight. And then, there's the second meeting needed for the budget review, that would be March 8th, which is a couple Thursdays from now, so. So, big picture, and these are slightly revised. You hopefully saw my email from earlier today. There was a couple of numbers in the police pension fund that we had to update for tonight's presentation, largely on the benefit payment side, somewhere on the expense side and the revenue side. But these numbers are updated to reflect those changes. It was this slide, and then the police pension fund slide, which is the next last slide that were slightly updated. So, but the budget, budgeted revenues for this year, kind of see, we're actually projected to collect more revenue, that uptick. There were some revenue streams that came in below budget, obviously, but the uptick was largely driven by associated billing permit fees, and then investment income from the police pension fund coming in stronger than they had budgeted. And then the expenses, coming in well below budget. A huge driver of that was personnel costs, and then there was just a cadre of other expenses that came in under budget, but nothing overly significant or greater than the decrease in personnel costs for the year. As we're going through, unless otherwise noted on the tabs, personnel costs were just up due to increase in salaries. The FICA stayed the same for the year, but obviously, FICA is a function of salaries, so if salaries went up, FICA is going to go up. Same thing with IMRF. The city's rate did increase by two tenths of a percent this year, so it was a little bit more of an uptick. Last year, it went down a little bit, but two tenths is not really significant in the grand scheme of things. And then there's a few items underneath the charts. It's listed as a reason for an increase or a decrease within a particular category within each department or fund, but that's not an exhaustive list. For example, you know, if office supplies went up $5, something else went down $5, probably not going to put that in. But if something went up 10%, 20%, we'll, we'll list that as, as a reason, as a driver for that. And then, again, just ask questions as we go through. Try to make this conversational as possible, and I think so, we'll try to, try to get through this, so. Starting with the general fund, so you can see that we were expected, as budgeted last year, to have a $12,578 surplus as budgeted. We're projecting, based upon the numbers that were returned to finance this year to end the year, with just under a $441,000 surplus, which is a variance of $428,000 and change to the good. Again, a lot of that, some of that driven on the revenue side, and some of it driven on the reduction in expenditure side. And then, this year, the fiscal 2019 budget, which we're about to go through as presented, has a surplus of $40,516. So, we have the summary of revenues for the general fund, which, for those of you with the budget books, is the actual line item detail is going to be the third tab called General Fund Summary.
Question.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Brad, you're looking at taxes here?
Mm-hmm.
You're looking at increase, minus 2.02. How do you calculate that, and what are you basing that on? The CIP? Not the CIP, but the tax.
Director Wilson?
Sure. So, the taxes category includes property tax, income tax, sales tax, use tax, telecom, and utility tax. So, obviously, we're all aware that the state last year reduced the income tax by the 10%, so that's accounted for in this reduction. Telecom tax has continued to trend downward, as largely the cell phone company, people are going away from landlines, and then cell phone companies are getting more creative with their bundles to get out of having to, to pay the telecom tax. And then utility taxes have trended down a little bit as well.
Okay.
You know, so, so those kind of all go into the stew of taxes to kind of drive that down a little bit. Sales tax revenue has remained strong, use taxes remain strong, property taxes, you know, obviously, they are what they are, but, so those income.
Would you say that our revenue streams, though, for those watching at home, have changed, right, or we're seeing how we're making money change as we have in the past?
A little bit. I mean, it's not, not overly significant. Like I said, with the income tax, the state taking the 10%, that obviously is a change to the mix, and the reduction of landlines and the pricing packages from cell phone companies has put downward pressure on the utility tax, or the telecommunications tax.
Okay.
So, those have been things we've had to manage and, and try to overcome. But, you know, by and larger, our, our two largest revenue generators are still property tax and sales tax, and that's, that's still held true, so.
Okay.
Which is, which is a good thing.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have one question. How much is, is the state up to date with all their payments to us, or are we still?
Director Wilson?
Yes.
Yes, why?
They're up to date.
They up to date?
Go ahead, Brad. Oh, sorry, Alderman Catalano?
Yes, on, on page 47, on the Georgetown permits, I see that the budget was at the $5,000, and it jumped up to 8,000 and proposed. But what, why is that big difference, any $3,000 difference in those permits? Did the prices go up?
I'm just going to call you Brad today. So, Brad?
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I would, you know, tough to get, defer to the chief for, for more finite details, but I know that there has been more of a focus on the enforcement of that, in that area, within the last year. And so, we have seen an uptick in the number of people coming in to purchase those, those placards and those parking things.
Okay, so the prices didn't go up, it's just enforcement?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You can get that.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Alderman Peter Jacob?
On page 48, the tracks card. So, in 2016, we collected roughly $164,000. Now, we haven't had tracks card in a while, but now we're expecting $450,000. I mean, that's triple. I know we're going to have it going both ways, but it's still, seems like a big jump.
So, I think Alderman Jacob answered your own question, but I'll let Brad answer it formally.
Well, it's still three times the amount. We have one extra camera, correct?
Go ahead.
So, the, the data is the last two fiscal years, and it had been down a portion or all of the last two fiscal years. If you trail it back a little bit, the revenue was over $300,000 in the preceding years, when we had the cameras just going the one way. And it had been pretty steadily over $300,000. So, adding the second return, adding the second direction, we didn't want to assume that it was going to automatically double those numbers, but, so the 450 is actually about one and a half times what it was when we had a full year's data of the westbound lane. So, we added about 50% for the eastbound camera for the first year.
So, I have a question. I know the answer, but I just think it's important for you to say. I asked you this earlier, but on page 47, the video gaming shows zero. Can you explain the magic on that to everybody, please?
Sure. So, that, that particular video game license, video game gaming number, which is in the licensing and permit section on page 47, a little over halfway down in that section, is marked on the zero. So, that is not the revenue that we collect from the machines themselves, where, that the state remits to us. That was the revenue, that was the $25 per machine that the establishment had to pay to license the machine. And so, with the changing of the business license program into the commercial occupancy program, and a couple of other changes, that revenue stream got rolled into the commercial activity line item, which is the line item directly above it on that page.
Can I make a recommendation? Maybe the council would agree with me. I, I know when I asked you about that, the commercial activity, you said it rolls in with that, and like contractor registration fees. I don't know about the rest of the folks, but I like to keep the video game lines separate. I don't want to see it rolled in, because I know it's, hasn't been, it's been a nice stream, but it could be controversial for some folks. So, to me, I'd like to, if we could keep a separate line item, if we could for future budget. Brad?
Yes, just, so, and again, I know I said it, but the gaming, the revenue from the machines itself, that's in a different fund. This is just the $25 license, so, so, I mean, you know.
Different area. So, it's in a different fund, not in the general fund?
Correct, yeah.
In the tourism fund. Okay, okay.
Yeah, so this is just literally the sticker that they put on the machine.
I got you. Okay.
Yeah, so.
Forgive me. Anybody else? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Can we go to the section on page 48 miscellaneous and go through that section there? It says, let's go to pull tabs and jar games. What? I'd like to go through that whole section there, basically.
Go ahead, Brad.
Sure. The pull tabs and jar games, that, to the best of my understanding, is, I guess, the pull tab game that the VFW has. They have pull tabs at the VFW, I'm told?
American Legion.
Or American Legion, and so, yeah, and so that's a revenue stream that's directly derived from those games at those establishments.
You mean the winnings and the tax?
I guess there's a fee or a percentage that they have to pay in for how much they sell, which is why it's variable every year, because it depends on how effective those games are. We just get that one time a year from the state, so, I guess they, they have to file their returns.
Okay.
For those.
Employee healthcare reimbursement of $375,000. The 300, projected 360, plus.
Sure.
So, Brad, before you respond, Alderman Sizmarski actually had a comment regarding the pull tabs?
Yeah, they get a printout every day of what they've sold, what they won, what they paid out, and it all goes, they get a tax refund at the end. They get that toll thing at the end of the year that you were just talking about.
Is that it? Okay. So, that answers your question. You wanted to talk about some of the other items, Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Brad.
Employee healthcare reimbursement, 360,000.
Sure.
Don't tell me these are gift cards.
Those are not gift cards. That's, you may recall, a number, a couple of years ago, the city upped the percentage that employees contribute to healthcare, the 15% that we have come out of our paychecks to offset the cost of healthcare. So, that's that number there. So, that's what the city collects from the employees for their portion of the healthcare.
Okay. Auction proceeds. I take it that's what we sell from auctions, the percentage that we get, that's from the online auctions?
Go ahead, Brad.
Correct. And especially, though, this is non-vehicular auction proceeds. The vehicle auction proceeds go into the SURF fund. So, this would be largely, to be honest, this kind of stuff that the police department sells on the auction, like gold, equipment, or things that they, they have to sell. So, anything that, like, we sell an old dump truck, an old squad, or something like that, that goes into the SURF fund auction proceeds.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yeah. The questions for auction stuff. Where is that in here? That we auction off our squad cars, pickup trucks, and that. Would it come to you say it's one?
Brad?
Thank you. Sure, the revenue for that goes into the SURF fund, which is Fund 51, which is, I don't know, well, a little bit further into the book.
I'll ask the question then.
Okay, sure.
All right. Anybody else? Go ahead, Brad, please.
Okay, sure. So, I think unless there's any other media question on the summary of revenues page, I know we've had a good conversation about some particular line items here. Unless there's any other questions, I think we'll probably.
Any other questions? Please continue.
So, the summary of expenses, and this is high level for the general fund as a whole. You see, you know, personnel's down, commodity's down, capital is down, interfund is up due to transfer to SURF, other is up largely due to the increased transfer to the police pension fund. It was offset by a reduction in the economic incentive line item, I think, and, you know, contractual is up. There's an increase in professional services line item within community development, and then the tracks guard with it going up for the entire year. And having both lanes operating, there was an increased cost for them to manage the two cameras instead of the one camera, so.
Alderman Roy Wesley, did you have a question?
Yes, page 49. Community development, minus 7.20. Is that from the, could you explain that one?
Brad?
Why it's gone down so much?
Sure. I mean, I can do it now, or if you want to wait two slides, and we get the CD, I can do it then, or?
Well, some of this, I, I figure.
Yeah, we're going to break these all down, right? This is just a summary. Are you okay with waiting until he gets in deeper into it? It'll probably answer your question.
Well, don't go six pages into it and then go back to this.
Yeah, no.
Two more. Two slides, right?
Yeah, maybe three.
Maybe three. Okay, go ahead.
This, one, one point real quick, if you want to back up a slide. You know, the estimated revenue for the general fund increased 1.69%. Go to the next one. And then, the expenditures only increased 1.49%. So, this year over year, you can see the revenues increased a little bit more than expenditures, which is always a good thing. Okay. Just real quick hitting on the expanded level items, and we'll get to these, again, in their respective departments, just kind of giving everybody a high-level review. In the general fund, there was one red sheet, which is in the streets department. There were five green sheets. The first four are in streets, the fifth one is in central services, and then there were two expanded level items, one green, one red, in the tourism fund. And like I said, we'll get to those as we go through, with just a high-level review.
Okay. Ready to move into the administration tab?
Yes. So, administration, you know, the, the greatest thing of note here, you see the increase in the personnel line item. I know I said that unless otherwise noted, it was just salaries. There is a note on personnel for this one. So, the admin salary is up, to the extent that it is, due in part to the new marketing and special events manager employee that we added halfway through last year, as well as we moved the GIS specialist into administration from community development, just due to a chain of command and a couple other, just streamlining the operation a little bit. So, so, really, it, the, the marketing and special events is some new money, but GIS is just reallocating where that person was budgeted out of.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Well, the GIS person, which happened to be in the building department, is now the new to administration, right?
City manager, Mirmes?
Yeah, it's functionally the same as far as supervisor. It's always been Nick. It's just his desk has been downstairs, and in the budget, it was taken out of CD. So, nothing's changed functionally. It's just on paper, we're taking him out of admin now instead of CD.
So, who?
Still reports to Nick.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
The GIS person.
He's always reported to Nick.
Could you continue?
Oh, I'm good.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Director Wilson?
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, like I said, other than that, there's nothing of great significance in the admin budget, so unless there's anything else, probably move on.
Go ahead, please move on.
Okay. City clerk budget, you know, I did reference the decrease in the other line item, since it was such a great percentage. It's only $450. It was just a reduction in the meetings and conference, and a reduction in the miscellaneous line items. Again, $450 was always 31% of that category for that department.
Great. Any questions? Great, move forward, please.
Sure. All right, so, community development. All right, so community development, so part of the question to being down seven point two percent, part of it in the personnel section was the movement of that GIS specialist from the community development budget into the admin budgets, that's part of it. There was also a reduction as you're aware, they did, there were some staffing changes downstairs in there, and so that has led to a decrease in personnel as well. That was offset by an increase in the contractual line item within that department. So you can see the raw numbers for the decrease in personnel, and then we said some of the offset in the contractual costs, and then the net effect of all that down at the bottom.
Okay, pretty straightforward. Any other questions?
No, no, one question.
Alderman, is that Eugene or Roy Wesley?
Me.
Both, okay. Who's older?
Eugene.
Go first. Go ahead, Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
My question is personnel. I understand it went down, but we also outsourcing personnel still in the building department. Am I correct? We have a contract with a JBL?
Director Wilson?
That's correct.
Okay, so when we go through this budget, does, does that mean that we keep being that contract in place for an entire year, or are we going to fill that position down the line? Because I thought that was only in temporarily position, and am I going to see an increase down the line with the budget when we hire someone for that position permanently?
City manager Mirmes?
Yeah, I think things continue to be in flux down there. If you've been following closely in the, in the weekly and monthly reports, you'll see that we've spent, spent a net seven hundred dollars more than we would have before. So we're not quite sure what the long-term summary would be, other than we expect it to be lower expenses than we've historically had, even though right now it's only seven hundred dollars higher, we expect it to be actually lower. So the long-term, we're looking to save some money.
Are we, are we looking to get rid of outsourcing and hire someone in that position? That's the question I have. Because in the long run, it may cost us more, because then you got paid a Irma and all that other stuff. I'm just asking, are we going to keep this contract in line here, even though it's seven hundred dollars more? Because I just don't want to sit here and you're going to come to me in eight months down the line and says now we want to hire another personnel full-time in there, and this is an increase that's going to cost us budget.
We don't, we don't expect there to be any increase in numbers. So these numbers tonight should be fine.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
Any other, Alderman Roy Wesley?
Professional services for twenty seventeen, we're at thirty-five thousand, and twenty eighteen, we're going to fifty. Projection for eighteen is a hundred thousand. Hundred and fifty for nineteen. What?
Director Wilson?
Where is that?
Oh, sorry. City manager Mirmes?
Yeah, so when it went up from thirty-five to fifty, I believe that was actually an expanded level item that year, approved by the council for some additional consulting that everybody in the council thought was a good idea. And then the reason why it wasn't fifty and it's up a hundred is because we had those mid-year staffing changes where we were doing a little outsourcing. And the reason it's one fifty, we want to protect ourselves in case we need to continue some of the outsourcing, so.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
In return, I mean, twenty sixteen, we're at seventeen thousand, and now we're all the way to a hundred and fifty. I understand you're outsourcing all your engineering, I'm taking it. Are we not doing anything in-house?
City manager Mirmes?
Yeah, we're doing things in-house. I think the number that's, that's key to focus in on is number one, the net seven hundred dollars, so you've got a lot of money here and a lot of money there, but you're really talking about seven hundred dollars so far. That's number one. And number two, if you've seen over the past two years, CD revenues have increased, you know, over four hundred thousand dollars per year. So I wouldn't be nervous about the overall CD budget. It's doing quite well.
Any other questions before we move on? All right, please continue. Director Wilson? Director Wilson, go ahead.
Moving into the finance department, the only item of note, the increase in the contractual is largely due to the inclusion in this budget year of the delinquent vehicle sticker mailer. You know, we've done it the last couple of years, but it wasn't actually programmed in the budget. It was a conversation we had kind of mid-year. The council directed us to do that. The last time we discussed it, there was direction to just do that as standard operating each year going forward. So that's been included in the contractual line item this year, which is largely the driver of that number.
So if I'm reading this correctly, that twenty-one, twenty-five increase, was that due to netting more money from that, or just a mix of multiple things?
It's predominantly the cost. It's not completely, but it's about the cost to do that mailer.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Great. Any other questions? Alderman Jacob?
Just in looking at the salaries, it went from three thirty-eight to three forty-five. That covers all raises for all the staff down there?
Director Wilson?
It does, yeah.
He asked the union staff. Does that cover union staff?
Yeah, so the local one-fifty contract is up as of four-thirty, so we used an estimator based on previous contracts and some, some relative comps for what we expect that to be going forward. And then of the five of us downstairs, one of the employees is actually paid out of the water fund, so it's really only four of us included in, in this, this budget.
There's four?
Do you have a question? Alderman Roy Wesley?
How many? Four employees, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's all the benefits too, correct?
Sorry, Director Wilson?
Yeah, sure. So I apologize, there are, are, some are interns in there as well. But no, the FICA and I am rough for line items further down, and healthcare is in central services back later on in the budget, so that's just salaries.
Any other questions? All right, please move forward.
The FICA is legal. Legal is continuing to trend downward over the last couple of years. For a note, you know, we know that legal's a, something that, you know, the council has directed staff to keep an eye on, so we've been putting a couple of different controls to, to try to put some collars on that, so.
Thank you, Alderman Woz. Great. Any questions, comments? All right, next. Police?
Sure. Police department, showing a decrease of a little over ninety thousand for the year, predominantly driven by a reduction in the salaries with the number of retirements that they've had down in the police department. The contractual is up, as I previously mentioned, due to the inclusion of both lanes on the tracks guard. And then the capital is down this year. It's just, you know, less items of that nature that they're requesting to purchase this year, so.
Questions? Alderman Jacob?
That's page sixty-nine, leave time buyback. Why is that number all over the board? We go from like thirteen thousand to forty-eight, then we go to twelve, or we're actually at forty-four, now we're down to ninety-nine hundred. Why, why does that number fluctuate so much?
City manager Mirmes?
Typically, all employees in the city have different tenures, so if you have people that have been here a long time, they would be eligible for leave back, and they could potentially, potentially retire, so then the leave back number wouldn't be as high. So newer employees don't necessarily qualify, so it all depends on retirements, years of service. So as you know, we had a lot of retirements, so that's why.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Well, thank you. And looking at this performance measure sheet on page sixty-eight, I would just ask the council to pay attention to the increase in thefts from two thousand and nine to two thousand and sixteen, because when public safety gets together, these are what we look to lower the numbers, and we'll have measures to get those down, so. Take that in consideration.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have a couple of questions.
Well, sorry, before, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but Chief, did you have some comments on, on these performance measures? Anything you want to comment? I know some of them were a little higher, but.
Sure, I can comment a little bit. The, the theft increase that we're seeing is not necessarily at residential or, what we're seeing is increase in thefts that are occurring at retail stores, specifically, I did say that. There, we are seeing an increase in thefts at retail stores, so some of those are, part, two parts could be to it. One is the stores are getting a little bit better at identifying it and calling us, and we've certainly had a number of successful cases and arrests over there. The second thing is, what we're noticing is people are a lot more mobile with their crimes. It's not necessarily Wooddale, Bensonville, Itasca residents that are committing those thefts at summer retail stores. They're coming from six, eight, ten towns away to commit those thefts. So that's the trend we're seeing. That's the trend that we're seeing throughout the suburbs, and, you know, quite honestly, a lot of times it's to support ongoing habits, you know, drug habits and/or other types of resale stuff. So we've even done some strategies to park, one, encourage our people to do reports when they're doing reports in those lots, and especially around the holiday times, but also we've even deployed cars that weren't occupied, that, that, you know, to park in the parking lot just as a deterrent, that they don't know if someone's inside or not, so. That's kind of been the big part where we've seen some increase in thefts.
Maybe not yet, but with the expansion of three ninety, do we anticipate cargo theft going up? Chief?
Actually, our cargo theft has gone down. A couple of years ago, we, we, we had a group that was operating in the area that was hitting a lot of these truck storage lots. That seems to have subsided. There was a cargo theft task force that we were a part of that tried to target some of those places, and then also working with some of the truck storage lots to post people on site more, get a little bit better control of who's coming and going from there, because, you know, with thousands of trucks in the area, it's tough to know who's supposed to be there and who's not supposed to be there, and if someone can come up and just grab a trailer, we don't always know until after that's already happened. So we worked with some of the truck lots to try and reduce that, but it's been kind of a region-wide effort in working with both local agencies and also even the federal government to identify some of the rings that have been hit in the area.
Alderman Tony Kinnon?
Yeah, identity theft, is that included in that column too? Or do we have a separate column for that?
That would be included in the thefts, but only if they were a victim of it. We have a number of attempted identity thefts too. You know, we work consistently through our senior groups who are, who are targets a lot of times of scams and other those, those types of things, and also residents that are fall victims to identity theft. We have a whole packet and a whole process that we share with them to let them know steps they can take if they are victims of identity theft, rather than just saying, well, there's nothing we can do. At least we can give them steps to help remediate the problem and with the FTC and some of the, some of the other stuff.
Okay, thanks.
Kinnon? Chief, do these numbers, is this what we report to the UCR? It is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alderman Sunny Sorrentino?
No.
Okay, Alderman Roy Wesley?
Chief, Township Social Service. Would you go into detail as to basically what that is?
Sure. That's a outside company that we use to make referrals to for, you name the issues. They, they see hundreds of clients of ours a year. It deals with anything from runaway issues, family issues, drug use, truancy issues. Our officers make regular referrals to this outside counseling company, and what they can do is they set up times to, they reach out to the family, they bring them into the station and deal with them on a social work issue and a counseling issue to help them get through that. If it requires long-term counseling, something that, you know, maybe extends beyond some of the basic help and, and something that he can't do, eventually he might make some referrals outside, so it's, it's been a really good service. The, the service that we use, Han and Associates and Steve Burr, who actually does our counseling, he really builds a good rapport with our local people, and I think it does prevent further problems from happening in the community by kind of heading them off, and our officers, you know, see the ones that really need some further attention beyond just responding to a call for service.
Okay.
Alderman Jacob?
When I'm saying Township, I'm thinking that it's Addison Township.
Yeah, no, it, it, it used to go through Quad Community, Addison Township and Family Services. Their costs were really expanding pretty rapidly, probably ten years ago when we first went with Han and Associates. And we've gotten not only much better response and the ability for them to come out immediately, but the cost is actually cheaper than, than we would get through, through the other service.
Okay, one more question?
Sure, Alderman Roy Wesley?
And again, the salaries, were their contracts still up? Or, where are we with the?
I'm sorry, I missed. Director Wilson?
Either one of us can take it. I mean, the contract is still open. Mediation is set for end of May?
May sixteenth, I believe.
Middle of May. Okay, arbitration's arbitration.
Okay, so if we're going there, arbitration, I mean, who knows what it may be, right? So what are you, what are you increasing this by? Three hundred thousand?
Director Wilson?
Sure. So what we do is obviously, as we mentioned previously, there was a number of retirements, so we've adjusted the salary numbers for those retirements, and then we've put in an assumptive increase based upon what we are best guesstimate as to what, how the arbitration might go. And obviously, you can go either way from, from what we've budgeted, but that's based upon kind of the, again, the best evidence and some recent awards that we've seen out of the marketplace.
So this number is what, three, four, five percent? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's our, that's the information we have at this time, with the contracts still being open.
Alderman Jacob?
On this tracks guard administration, I know revenues are up, but the administration I see is up substantially. And I remember years ago, we, the squads had to go out there and actually pick up the videos. I thought everything's computerized. I would have thought that number would be going down instead of higher.
Chief? Sure, so you're correct. We used to have to go out and test the equipment, and they would have to go out and manually remove the film. It's now all going to be a web-based, video-based system that we don't have to go out and do anything with it. But because we are doubling the approaches, the cost, actually the monthly cost of it per approach has remained exactly the same. They added the second approach, so the, the cost, the monthly cost doubled, but we've been steady with that company with the same monthly rate per approach for the last, I believe, fifteen years, so.
All right. Just one other question.
Addison Township, the dispatch, how long are we in that contract for the three nineteen, three ten? It seems like that's been for several years. Is that a set number for X amount of years?
Yeah, that is a three-year agreement that'll be coming up in twenty nineteen, and at that point, they'll be providing us with a new number that we'll budget for next year.
Thank you. Alderman Eugene Wesley, get a question?
I have a question on a fitness program. So we got the city council, two members on that board at Park District. Why are, why don't we do our district fitness?
Chief?
I mean, why, I understand we got to do it, but?
Well, part of what the fitness program goes to is a couple of things. As, as you know, we have our own workout area here, so we do encourage our officers. Part of their contract is that they have to take a fitness test every year, so, you know, occasionally some of the equipment does go down there, or some requests for some new equipment. We're pretty reasonable with, I think we budget up to forty-five hundred dollars a year in there. And then also, we offer a limited number of executive physicals that can be taken out of that budget account that allow them to work with Elmhurst Hospital to get a, you know, basic, an executive physical, not an in-depth physical or stress test, but uh... But that's a part of that process too, so.
Great. Any other questions for the Chief? Police? I think we're good. Thank you, Chief. Thanks. Next question. Next day brother?
Sure. It's the Board of Police and Fire Commission, net effect change of minus $30. Some added hours for the secretary reduction in employee recruitment.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions? Good, please move forward.
Sure. Next house, Public Works Administration.
Mrs. Fox.
Thing, two significant, just the decrease in commodities is a reduction in building maintenance line item by a little bit and a reduction in the uniform line item, which is the, the uniforms is for the, the union employees. So, and just based on the number of union employees and then historical utilization of that, of that allowance.
So the building maintenance cost went down because we're not investing, because long-term we have possibly a different strategy? Is that? Page 476?
I, I don't know that that's the case. It just, if you go and there's only a couple of years presented here. If you go back and look historically, it's been around the 15,000 mark if you average out the past number of years.
Okay.
Spiked up a little bit in 17, but preceding years, the current years have all been 14,500 to 15,000. So just trying to keep it kind of in line with what we're actually seeing out there for what they're doing, so.
Any questions? Alderman Jacob?
The uniforms cost, is that just for administration or is that for the whole Public Works Department?
Director York?
Yes, thank you. That's for the entire Public Works Department.
It's part of their contract, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Any other questions for Director York? Thank you.
Yes.
Help? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Uh, Stream Bank, Streetscape. They went from.
Where are you?
Seventy-nine.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet. Could you hold your question, please, for that? Thank you. Please, thank you. Any other questions on this part? All right, let's move forward to streets, please.
Sure.
Looks like Brad has already.
Yes, Streets Department, nothing overly significant. Like I said, just decreasing capital outlay through the nature and the amount of items in that subset of accounts that they're, you know, that they think they may need for this particular year. There are five expanded level items in here. So if it's, if it's okay, I'd rather get the line item questions out of the way, such as the one that Alderman Roy Wesley wants to ask. Get those out of the way first and then do the expanded level items. And so we're gonna do the line item questions first and then the expanded levels.
So Alderman Roy Wesley, you want to ask your question before we go into the expanded line item, which are the colored sheets?
Sure.
Should I ask your question first, please?
Stream Bank, uh, Stream Bank. It, it came down a little.
Could you, could you raise your voice, please? We can't hear you on this side.
Stream Bank, Streetscape?
Yes.
It was 10,000, then I projected a 9,082. Why is, why is that coming down?
Well.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so last year we budgeted 10,000. We're budgeting 10,000 again this year. The 9,082 is actual cost. So we thought it was going to be 10,000. It came in a little bit under what we thought it was going to be.
Okay.
Any follow-up questions?
Nope.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Did our, I noticed our mosquito went up, right?
Director York?
Detective Ford, 46,000, now proposal 50,000. Is that, okay.
Director York?
Yeah, so last year we budgeted 50,000. The year before we spent 49,000. The year before that, we spent 64,000. So we budgeted 50,000. We haven't changed the program. We're still contractual, we are in a contract with them. So our price is going to probably be right around the 46,000, but we like to budget just a little bit more in case we need to do more springs. And so we have a little bit of slough background.
And I know we talked about doing something jointly with the county. This still, doing it our way is still fiscally more responsible and more efficient, I guess? Director York?
Um, let's not go with efficient. I don't know if that would be a great term to use, but.
Better, better, better delivery of services?
Yes. Well, when the county went out to bid, their bid price was way more.
Okay.
Well, first of all, they couldn't get anybody to bid except for Clark and it was all jacked up. So we actually have got a pretty good price and we're under contract right now. So when the county brings it back up again, we'll see if we can piggyback onto them. If not, we'll just continue to go with what we've got.
Great. Any other questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have one more. The beet juice, how does that not fall into MFT funds?
Director York?
Yes, beet juice is not, uh, MFT eligible by IDOT. So if it's not eligible by IDOT, then you can't use an MFT fund.
Okay, then I wanted to just do a follow-up on that. How much salt do we have left or anything?
We're good.
We're good?
We're good.
So my question is, because I noticed.
Is that a follow-up to your follow-up?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Stone Ice Control went up from 32, then you're proposing 42,000, $10,000 increase. Now, now if you say we're good on salt, did we increase the salt or why did it go up so high?
Director York?
Okay, so salt is being, salt is a allowable expense out of the MFT fund. So when you see MFT fund, salt will be there. Beet juice is not. So beet juice is in here. So we're going to expand it next year because if everybody remembers, we bought a 200 and some odd thousand dollar truck that's going to have a huge tank for beet juice in the back of it.
Got it. All right. Any other questions in this? Okay. Uh, Director York, comment?
No, I'm good. I'm just, just waiting.
Excited?
I'm fired up.
All right. Keep going, Director Wilson, please.
Sure, thank you. So the next slide is going to be page 81 of the budget binder behind the Streets tab. Is the first expanded little sheet of the night. And it's the Potter Street Beautification. And this was discussed, I believe, during the CIP process. And this was the recommendation that came out of that was to add the 22,500 to this particular line item within the Streets Fund. So this sheet is pretty much just a copy and paste from the conversation that we had at the CIP meeting back in January.
So I know it's a recommended item. I'm still not very thrilled with the wording because this is phase two. So the project was not completed in fiscal year 2017, but I appreciate the recommendation. So thank you for that consideration. Any other comments, questions? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Brad, with this $22,000 on that project, what would that project bring, bring that up to? Dollar-wise?
Director Wilson?
Do you mean between the work that was done this past year and this?
Two twenty-something.
We could come back to it.
Well, I want to say it's about 230.
Say 228, I thought.
228, 230, yeah.
Okay, that's all I need, roughly.
Looks nice, huh? Anybody else? Any questions, comments? Great, keep going.
Uh, the next one is actually the cheapest expanded level item I've ever prepared, with a total budget request of zero.
Excellent. We can move forward.
So I just, I probably have, so this is for the frontage road maintenance, as is in the narrative there. I'd have to defer to Mr. York for any finite questions, but the, the best part is that the county said that they're going to reimburse us for this cost.
Yep.
And so we would, we would be, have to pay it out on the front end throughout the year. But then at the end of the season, we would send an invoice to the county to be reimbursed, which would bring the cost back down to zero.
Okay. Do you have a question on the zero dollar?
I got a question for the county, basically.
Go ahead. Alderman Roy Wesley?
What dollar amount are they putting in their budget for this?
Director York?
I could say it's not our problem what they're budgeting, but they never, they've never asked us how much we're going to spend to maintain the area. So.
Excellent.
We're going to cut, I mean, it's cutting grass is basically what it is right now.
Great. Not a bad problem to have. Any other questions on this? Next page, please.
Sure. Next one.
Maintenance of the rain gardens?
That's two more sheets.
Uh, landscaped islands, excuse me.
Landscaped islands.
I'm ahead. I'm excited. Go ahead.
Sure. So this would be the planted islands on Wooddale and Irving Park Road. You can see in the narrative kind of a description of what the type of work that will be, we will be looking to retain. Spring cleanup mulching, bi-weekly garbage, weed removal, et cetera. And then in the future, by future, I mean subsequent fiscal years, not this particular fiscal year, maintain the clock tower grounds and the northeast corner, which is also part of the clock tower project, which I believe I actually saw them tearing things up and putting fence up today. So that project looks like it's actually underway at this point.
Just a quick question on that. So we have Wooddale Road and the county's helping with that right away to, to me, well, to maintain the right of way? Like the one before this. But Illinois 19 is a state road, right? Would they not help us with this? Director, Director York?
Yes. When we did that intersection and we decided to put plantings in the middle of the intersection.
We took ownership.
Yeah, when we do anything other than asphalt or concrete there, then it's our responsibility. So we'll see the same thing up, up at Wooddale, or excuse, yeah, Wooddale and 390. When those islands get developed and we have plantings in those islands, we'll be responsible for the maintenance of those as well.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Jacob?
My only question on this is, I mean, do you really feel 6,000 is going to be enough for this? Because with the design of everything, it kind of seems like it might even be a little low that number.
Director York?
Yes. This is basically for the two islands. That's it. The clock tower is going to be under construction, so we're not putting any money into it for this year because we don't know exactly how it's going to all turn out and when it's all going to turn out. Is it going to be planted? You know, this spring, is it going to, something's going to happen. The plantings aren't going to take place until the fall. So we didn't budget anything for either of those locations. So that's why in the future, this, this line item will increase. But right now, we're hoping that $6,000 will get us through till next budget year.
Director Wilson, should we anticipate this being another expanded line item next year, expanded item next year because the clock tower should be done?
Correct.
Okay. So it'll continue to be a fancy color? It won't be built into the actual budget at some point?
Well, so I would think that if the, this one stays green and stays in, the next year, this 6,000 or, or relatively speaking, based upon the number that actually cost this year, would go into the budget as a base cost.
Moving forward.
Moving forward. So we wouldn't come back and rehash this 6,000 again.
Okay.
It would be the additional amount based upon what the needs of the future periods would be.
Okay. Any questions on this side? No? Alderman Jacob?
Just since we're talking about the clock tower, for the water feature, are we going to maintain the ponds or is that going to be part of this deal?
Director Wilson?
Someone's going to take care of that.
I'm going to defer to somebody to my left.
Oh, sorry. City Manager Mermis?
I was actually going to say, we're not actually talking about the clock tower because it's not for this budget here.
Excellent. We can move forward.
I don't, I don't, we don't have that information yet.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Does this have to go off a bid or are we just contracted on?
Director York?
Well, I mean, technically if it's under 10,000, we don't have, or if it's under 20,000, we don't have to take it out to bid by law.
Okay. Great, thank you. Alderman Roy Wesley?
So it says removal of dead plants. How about replacing them? Is this in that price too?
Director York?
No.
Follow-up? We can't, there's no way to foresee what's going to be damaged, right? Do you, you guys don't build a buffer of X amount of dollars for, for that, just anticipating? Director York?
Well, I mean, this is the first, we're coming out of the, we're in the middle of the first winter that we've actually had plantings out there. So to make an assumption that we're going to lose 50% of the plants or 5% of the plants, if I, if I budgeted for 10%, we'd probably lose 50%. If I budgeted for 50%, we'd lose 10%. So that's not in here. This is just for the maintenance of it.
Great. Any other questions? All right, let's move forward.
Just the one that you just mentioned, the maintenance of the rain garden ponds. So as noted in here, the Elizabeth Pond, I believe, is still Copenhagen's baby at this point. So the 2,800 that we're requesting this year will be for the Potter Street Pond. Would, add a caveat to that, from a future green sheet standpoint, we do have the cost in here for year two and three. So I, I would think it, we can bring it back next year, but we know the cost of that for the Potter Street Pond and Elizabeth Ponds going forward. So we know what that cost is going to be in future years to build that into the prospective budgets. Which is outlined on the slide and on the green sheet.
Got it. Alderman Jacob?
Does this include making the rain garden a real rain garden? Cause it's not really a rain garden at the moment.
Defer to.
Director York?
This includes keeping the plantings in their current status of whatever we're going to call this. A, keep it going. So is it a rain garden? Okay. Is it not a rain garden? All right. Bigger issue that we have with this whole thing is there is a drainage component on the back end of it that Metro doesn't seem to be too excited about maintaining their portion of it, which we've asked them several times to, to do.
Has there been a site analysis to actually confirm it's, it's a Metro drainage situation? Or that there's not some type of dumping or?
There, I mean.
Situations? Cause there's a weird configuration there that I always find funny when some new construction was built on Potter Street. But who am I? You guys have, have looked at the site and I mean.
I mean, I've been back there and I've traipsed through that, that tall grass behind the wall and it's not anything dumped back there. It's just unmaintained. But it's on Metro property. It's not on city property. And if I go back there, we could be arrested.
How about, aside from the back, how about on the sides? Now getting more descriptive. How about on the sides of that pond? I've noticed one of the retaining walls.
Property.
Yes, that, yeah. I've noticed that there's a.
There's extra water?
Um, yeah, there's convenient funneling of water into that pond, directly into that pond. Any, any water analysis ever done there? Does, City Manager Mermis?
I believe we, we litigated that out once before at a committee and that same question was asked. And then we went back and we looked and then we answered that we didn't think that that was the main impact of what the problem was over there.
Okay.
And that that was a known variable, the water addition that you're talking about.
Okay.
And that the main problem was, one, we really didn't have an ongoing upkeep of the area. And two, Metro does have a negative impact. We did gain some traction with Metro, as you know, at the end of last year. They did do some work out there. The problem is they need to be continually hounded to keep, to keep doing the work. So we'll try to do that. And again, this all kind of plays into the Tall Oaks Pond agenda item, which is also forthcoming in future items. It's all interconnected over there.
Got it. Alderman Jacob?
Now this, you know, normally when we do a project, when we did this project, we spent money on it. Did we not hold any money back? I mean, could we have the attorney go after the original contractor? Because what, what they promised is not what's there.
City Manager Mermis?
Again, though, as I've stated, there's, there's a major problem with Metro and a drainage stretch for that whole area. So I wouldn't necessarily blame the contractor. We know what a major problem is out there. It has nothing to do with them.
All right. Any other follow-up questions, comments? Move over, move to the non-recommended, please. God bless you.
So this is one of the two red sheets in the budget, the CRS rating. And it would be a budget request amount of $50,000 and would run, I think, optimistic, perhaps overly optimistic for two years and potentially, or more likely three. And I think there was an outside chance at a fourth year on this. So really the project would be anywhere between, what, 100 and 200,000 dollars for this. Previous direction from the DIAS had been to not move forward with this, but it came up at some point. And as stated, we talk about during the budget, which is why it's here. But there had been previous direction not to move forward with this, which is why it's a red sheet.
And we're still trying to pursue something with the county, though. No guarantees, but.
That is correct.
Anybody? Alderman Jacob?
I was a city liaison with the Stormwater Committee and this is something they really kept pushing for. If we did go ahead and approve this, how many residents, from what I understand, it would just lower some people's premiums? Or what, what exactly are the benefits of doing this? Cause I know the story. Because I know the Stormwater Committee has brought this up many times.
I know you've probably tired of talking. So 100 to 112 homes affected. Savings insurance annually, savings of $6,300 total. Total $6,300 savings annually for those 100 to 112 homes that are affected. So basically spending $200,000 to save, what, $6,300? $18,000, do the math, right? Three years? So spend 200 grand to save 200,000. Still important, still real people, still real flooding. So I know you guys are talking about pursuing it with the county. We hope you guys will still do that. But cost benefit ratio, I think that was why it was not recommended. City Manager Mermis?
Yeah, correct. I don't know, wasn't Matt, did you have updated numbers? Was it a little higher or was it that, was that the amount?
I think it was a little bit higher than, that's why I was just trying to go back through.
Number of houses or amount of money?
I think the amount.
Amount, okay.
The amount, but it's not too far off of that number. If it's 10,000, it's a lot. So spent $200,000 to save 30,000 over three years.
And so just to be clear up here for everybody, it's 10,000 total amongst all those homes. So we're talking 10,000, call it 10,000, be generous. 100 homes talking about 10 bucks a house annually.
Yeah, because it's just an extra 5% off their current cost.
Right.
So.
Okay. Okay. Everybody good with that? Any other questions? All right. Do we, you don't need direction or anything from us on those, right?
Unless there's a change from the...
Okay. Is there anybody, any change? Good. Move forward, please.
Moving on to the vehicle maintenance garage. Nothing really significant with this one. Just the increase in the contractual is due to their dues and subscriptions. You know, based upon the nature of the types of vehicles, there's different schematics or different programs they need to maintain the vehicles. And so this is just, I guess they needed another one or two different vehicle types, manuals or subscription services to maintain the vehicles. So nothing, nothing of any great significance.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay, let's move over or move on before Alderman Eugene Wesley gets in his seat and raises his hand. Just kidding. Got any questions, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Central Services. So this is where a lot of the items that don't have, that aren't specific to one department such as healthcare, the property casualty insurance, you know, audit function, maintenance of, you know, City Hall, things of that nature are put in here. Not enough space to type on this page, so we didn't have a second page of notes going forward. So the increase in contractual is due to IT professional services going up a little bit. Nothing significant, just, you remember last year, we moved everything into the one account so that IT costs could be tracked in a more centralized location. After doing that, so we're just continuing to right-size this, the IT silos as Nick's getting everything put into those account groups for him. And then there was a slight increase in the property casualty insurance. You may recall that the actual cost this year was up hardly anything. But we did build in a little increase next year on the work hop size and salaries are continuing to go up. That number is going to go up a little bit. There's also a green expandable item in the contractual section. Commodities down due to reduction in electric utilities. Electric costs have still been pretty favorable over the last couple of years. Again, capital LA, you know, IT equipment is the only account in the capital LA. So again, as we're right sizing those silos, so nothing significant, just kind of getting those right. Interfund increased to the SURF transfer. And then at other, like I said, increase in the police pension request, which I know we had the police pension meeting a few weeks ago. And we did reduce the sales tax rebate line item a little bit based upon how we've seen those numbers coming in for the two rebate programs that we have out there right now.
And that's not tied to the state, the governor's initiative to expand that 10% again this year? Has nothing to do with that? Okay. Any questions?
I'm here.
Okay. Alderman Jacob?
Community donations?
What is community donations? Is that what, like when the cheerleaders come in or are we giving $500 here? Or what is community donations?
Director Wilson?
Sure. Yes. However, the Bandits donations or the Boy Scouts, or whatever, that comes out of tourism, the Tourism Fund, those donations. This was put in a couple of years ago when there were a couple of extra donation requests that came up during the budget season for groups that didn't meet the criteria to be included in the Tourism Fund. So that's why the 8,000 is there. But since that year, those haven't been repeated, which is why you see the running zeros going forward.
Well, that was really my question. Because I know we give donations. It seems like zero didn't seem like a good number for that.
Sure, yeah, that's in tourism, so.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Just first by memory, what is CERF Fund?
It's the SURF Fund. We talked about the Capital Equipment and Replacement Fund. Director Wilson, is that correct?
I have one other question is employment engagement. How do we go for projected 3,850 up to 10,000?
I like you, I know, go ahead. You're director.
Great question. Yeah, so, sure. So previous to this year, that line item was called the Wellness Program, which did fund like the flu shots and the screenings and some of the conversations we had about gift cards at a council meeting a couple of weeks ago. That, the Wellness Committee in and of itself has been rebranded as the Employee Engagement Committee. And what we noticed was that there was a fair amount of overlap between that line item and the one, two line items above it in the Employee Recognition Line Item. So this year for the budget, what we did was we kind of right-sized the Employee Recognition Budget, which you'll notice goes down $5,000. And then put that money in the Employee Engagement Committee, which is where the group that was kind of spending that money and added it to that, which put it at 9,000 and then we added another thousand for a couple of the other initiatives that they're trying to get off the ground for employee morale, engagement, things of that nature. So the net effect between those two line items is, what, a $1,000 increase? Just based upon, like I said, the initiatives of the Employee Engagement Committee. But as I said, there was a reduction in the Employee Recognition Account and then offset by an increase in the Employee Engagement Account two lines later.
Director Buggy has some big plans for us, doesn't she? Great. All right. Any other questions? Alderman Roy Wesley?
The maintenance for the train station, where would that be at?
Director Wilson?
Sure. That'd be in the Metro Lot Fund, which is a number of tabs.
We'll get to it maybe about 11:30.
So the wellness thing is basically $10,000, what you give cards and everything else, right?
Go ahead, Director Wilson.
Sure. So the Employee Engagement Line Item, the 10,000, that's part of the Wellness Fair. That's the employee picnic in the summer outside. It's the holiday recognition luncheon. They also have a number of other events throughout the year here within City Hall.
City Manager Mermis?
Yeah, I would also add that I specifically remember there was actually one or two Saturday strategic planning sessions that it was really the council's idea to up our game with that, to give recognition to the employees. So that was actually a council initiative, the slight increase in...
I thought it was to cover the extra bacon that we brought that day.
At various events, bacon usually is a hit.
Got it. We'll continue. I'm getting a little giddy here. Go ahead. Director Wilson?
Yes. Unless there's any other line item questions, or was the one expanded level item?
That's it.
There's a lot of words on this slide and we just pretty much copy and paste from the sheet. In summary, it's the expansion of the customer service window and community development. Don't know if you're familiar with downstairs or not, but they had the two windows at 90 degrees, which was kind of awkward. The one that's directly in front of you when you come through the door, which can't come through because it's locked now. But that one, due to some of the reorganization I've had, isn't really utilized at all anymore. So everybody's funneled to that one window. There's some issues with helping multiple people also. There's not enough room to pass plans back and forth. It's just largely inefficient.
And we talked about increased revenues. I think I asked you this question. We went from 800 to 1,100?
About 900 to a little under 1,100 permits.
900 to 1,100. Okay. So I know some might ask this, but do we really see the influx all at the same time? Okay. Director Cage? Welcome.
Thank you. So good news, bad news. Good news is we're extremely busy. Just the other day in February, you know, I counted six people lined up at the window. So that's good news from the standpoint that even in February, which clearly is the off-season, we have people wanting to do things. The problem with that is if those are six individuals, they're in line for that one window spot. So what typically happens if someone brings in a set of plans? We either open up the other window, which we have done numerous times, or you have to take the plans into the conference room, which is fine because we've got plenty of space. And then that takes someone from the front counter away into the conference room in between CD and Finance. If the phone's ringing, that person is inaccessible for that time period. So the good news is that we have a lot of activity. One of the key aspects to this is making ADA accessible. One benefit of that is it gives you more counter space. Some of these large industrial, some of these large industrial buildings that we have, I'm sure, you know, Alderman Woods and others have seen the sets of plans. They're huge. You can't even get those underneath the windows. So we've budgeted an amount. We're hoping it comes in less than that. But the problem we have, even if you have two individuals coming at one time, it's hard to have a conversation with both. If you're talking about something that's delicate like a citation or something like that, typically you don't want to do it at the window. So I think my standpoint is that if, when people, the window really is for people who are coming in for permits and questions. And if we can accommodate more people, there's more people, there's less people in line waiting to be served and they feel better served, is my opinion.
Vice Mayor Woods? I've always wanted to say that.
Thank you. I just wanted to, since I spent about half of my life in building departments around DuPage County, I would have to say, without question, it's the most inefficient, unwelcoming building department front that I've been in. That's all I have to say. And it's about time.
When would we, so if this is approved, when would you guys anticipate doing this?
Well, timing is everything. We don't want to do it in the midst of our peak season. Right now would be the perfect time. Obviously, we're not going to do that. I think, you know, obviously with the process, we have to pick the right time. Really, from the last year, this is probably the best time of year to do it. So it would be this time next year, maybe around the holidays if possible, because that is quite a time in general. But we have to be careful. I mean, you guys know we get a lot of people come in right after the first of the year for, you know, on the rental side of things or right to the end of the year. So we do have some deadlines around there. I think we want to be very careful because we don't want to interrupt, you know, our customers, our residents, our businesses. But on the flip side, we want to open up that space so that if you have a set of plans, you can have a conversation to the side and somebody else can be helped. And usually people come in, they're not just on their own. It's husband and wife, it's two or three people. If we have a bigger group, we go to the conference room. But it's, I think really this is, Alderman Woods put it correctly. It's you have a very narrow window and you have a number of people coming, so.
I think your point to add to that, I've sat and talked with Brad during, but off hours and that phone just explodes. So I can't even imagine if somebody having to bring somebody in a conference room away, taking that head out of there and that phone continuously still going off and losing that head. So I'd say that that's a very valid point as well as losing that person at the counter when you have to bring that person in the back to accommodate.
Right. And from our standpoint, you know, today is a good point. We had people at the counter, we had the phone ringing, we had a delivery. So if someone's...
Judgment made.
If someone's assisting someone and the phone's ringing and you can hear it because you're not in the conference room, you're going to answer it a lot quicker. And whether someone's in person or on the phone, they're treated just the same.
Right. Great. Questions? Alderman Jacob?
This 30,000, do we actually have a contractor come look and give us an estimate? Or did Matt come up with this number? Did Jeff come up with this number? Where did this number come from?
Director Cage?
That's a great question. No, neither Matt or Jeff provided this number. We have Bill Inspector from HR Green, who's done some contracting before. We got a general number. We were very conservative with it. We don't want to come back and ask for anything more. I'm hoping this is on the high side, so the actual number comes in lower. But we did make some measurements, put together an estimate, and that's what this is based on. Good question.
Alderman Sonny Sorrentino?
Is there any way that you could utilize or kind of tailor the community service room into the needs of your department with these blueprints and a lot of privacy, both at the window and in the room?
Director Cage?
That's a good point. The problem that I have at the moment is even going to the conference room we have between Finance and Community Development, it takes you away from where the action is, which is okay for someone who's not on the phone a lot. But if you're, if, we do tend, we get quiet times and we get very busy times. Seems to me that people come in at the same time. And if there's two or three people, there's four or five people. So the further we go away from the window, it seems like the more issues we have because that's when you get a line of people. And then if the first person in line is a 10, 15-minute conversation, that's when the people behind them start to get frustrated. So it's a point we haven't looked at, but it's a good point. My only concern is there's a little bit of a travel distance between the two.
Were you talking about Alderman Sorrentino building out that room and essentially moving desks?
Putting it to use for the times they need it.
Were you talking about moving their offices? Like, I mean, like you said, otherwise they're on the other side.
Right. Or, I don't know, just it's a built-out space that isn't utilized as often as it should or could where the development office is busy a whole lot of times. So why not take advantage of what's there? And I mean, if there's 10 people at the window and you can only take care of four people at a time, what difference does it make if they're on the north or the south end of that lobby?
I start to think as the city gets bigger, to your point, Alderman Sorrentino, I mean, I can't even see that counter. I have a feeling 40 years from now, you may come back and say, this is too small. You know, so I look at your idea and I think, kind of like the bank scenario, when you walk in a bank and you have these little glass doors and you have tellers, that kind of idea with that room. I mean, yes, it's probably going to be a heck of a lot more than 30,000, but does that make sense that rotunda's open all the time? A little bit more friendlier, more, like maybe brighter? So I, sorry, didn't mean to steal your thunder, but I saw it was a great idea. It's probably a lot more. No, 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 I'm just saying because he says it's so dreary, you got to go downstairs and unwelcoming like Alderman Vice Mayor Woods mentioned. That's why I was mentioning it. So go ahead, Director.
It's not something we've looked at. It's a good idea. If I'm back before you in a few years, again, good news, bad news. Good news is we're that busy. Bad news is we've got to spend more money. So that's something I haven't thought about, but as we're talking about it now, it's something worth considering because even if we expand the window now, so you can get more capacity at some point, maybe that's not even enough. I'm not sure.
I would say unless somebody disapproves, could you also, when you come to us later for this, for formal approval, could you look at the option of building out that room? I'm sure it'll be a lot more, but can you bring us that other option so we can build for the future if needed?
Absolutely.
Questions? Alderman Jacob?
This is more of a question for our Finance Director. Since we're expanding windows, I mean, the few times I have come to City Hall, there are times in the Finance Department where there are lines there. Since we're expanding windows, I mean, the few times I have come to City Hall, there are times in the Finance Department where there are lines there. Is there a need there for some type of expansion, or is that pretty much people just pay the bill and they're out of there in two minutes?
Director Wilson?
Yeah, so, a couple of things. One, if there's somebody occupying one of the windows with a water bill complaint or an issue, we'll take people at the other window. So, there are two windows there. Our issue, if you will, is we just have the one computer in the middle. So, even if there's a line, we really can't process two payments at once because there's one point-of-sale process computer in the middle. So, inefficiency we would need would require a second computer, which would be another cash drawer, and then there's other control issues. So, it's, it's not, I mean, line gets a little bit long, you know, during vehicle sticker season or whatever, but you've got to expect that during vehicle stickers. And it's, line moves pretty quick, but like I said, it really, our issue is just the, the computer issue in the middle to process the payments. And 90% of the time we'll use the one window, so if there is an issue, we just take them at the other window. Or we go sit with them at the bench by the, the south revolving door and try to hash it out.
Great.
Thank you.
We can talk about it later, I guess, let's, if we could, continue on, the Road and Bridge Fund, please?
Sure. Just, just a point of order, that green sheet was the end of the general fund.
Oh, right, sorry.
So, just, just pointing that out.
Any other, any, any questions before we leave that tab? I think Director Cage has direction for when he actually brings us up. Great.
Let's move on to the Road and Bridge Fund. The, obviously the one that jumps off the page here is the transfer to the MFT Fund. You may recall. Bless you. A number of weeks ago, put in the manager report that we are moving a significant amount of money from the MFT Fund to the Capital Improvement Plan for IDAT-related expenses. Part of the conversation the past couple of years has been to utilize the Road and Bridge Fund money and the MFT money for a project. So, that was that project, and so this is part of that functionality to utilize the Road and Bridge Fund money for those projects going forward. So, it's a planned transfer, like I said, based on previous council direction the past couple of budget years to utilize that money for a, a bigger project.
Great. Any questions on this? Alderman Roy Wesley?
So, we're showing a deficit, can I understand this, Mike?
Director, Director Wilson?
For this year, that is correct.
Director Wilson?
Sure, so the, the budgeted one was 42,800. We're estimating ending the year, the deficit of just a little over 82,500. And then for next year, because of that transfer out to the MFT Fund to draw down the fund balance, the deficit, they're showing the deficit just under the 271,000.
You have a follow-up, Alderman Roy Wesley?
Are we pooling from one fund to another and hurting our resurfacing our roads and stuff like that? By doing this?
Director Wilson?
Did you say hurting the road resurfacing? I don't, I wouldn't say that, I mean, the resurfacing program that was discussed in the CIP, I mean, that's the, the study that we've been following for the past couple of years. Yeah, I mean, this money could be used to that end. And like I said, it's, it's going to that one specific project, the final invoice for the intersection project. I mean, it, it could certainly be used for that, but I mean, the resurfacing program's been pretty regimented within the CIP, so I mean, it would be.
I'm just using that one as an example.
Yeah, but I don't, I think to your question, if, the question is, you know, kind of, you know, kind of off our nose, despite our face, to get something done. I don't, I don't think that there's anything specifically that the council's identified or Public Works identified that we're not able to do because of this transfer.
So, we do the street resurfacing, resurfacing study, which is up, what, next year?
I believe that's correct, yes.
So, thus far, we have, we have a method to our madness, we're sound like we're cheating, right? For the most, cheating, bad words, right? Director York?
Yeah, though, in here, the road resurfacing, that's our patching program, that's buying asphalt to do pothole patching, that's doing other things, not road program itself, the road program is in the CIP.
And that's a capital improvement project when we do those?
So, this is like, when we did the big patches over on Gilbert a couple of years ago, or Forest Reserve, or we're going to do some, some large patches on Addison Road for main breaks and stuff. That's where this kind of money would come out of, or for our potholes.
Okay. Alderman, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Where is the bridge repair coming out of? For the one that's bridged to nowhere on Irving Park Road? Where, where, what fund is that coming out of to repair that?
Director Wilson, Bridge to Nowhere?
Yeah, that's in the CIP, the Capital Improvement.
So, it is, so we, we pulled out this fund to put in the CIP, is that, because that's a bridge, which way I don't care, bridge to nowhere.
Right, now, it, it's programmed just out of the, the CIP. I mean, if you kind of follow the money, there was some money from here flowing into there.
Is it because it's not related to operational?
Yeah.
Well, we're talking about an overhaul of the bridge, we're talking about an actual massive repair, we're not talking about patching a crack. At Walkway, right?
But the point is, we have some major repairs coming up on that, you guys seen the slides, where's the money coming from?
So, it's, I think it's just a matter of where you want it to sit, I mean, I'm not speaking for you, but I would, the way I took it is it's a matter of where does it sit, right? At what point does it go from a repair to an actual replacement, a capital improvement? Director Wilson? The actual finance person, thoughts?
Yeah, so, to Alderman Wesley's point, you know, the repair, like, right now, the design for it's budgeted out of the CIP and the repairs next year are budgeted out of the CIP, which is the non-home rule sales tax and utility tax predominantly. And then grants, whatever flowing in there. You know, to your point, you know, if, if there is, you know, an intent or a want to, you know, funnel some of the 156,000 remaining fund balance in there to offset the cost of that bridge repair next year, since it's a road bridge and it's a bridge, we could certainly do that, just.
I don't care where the money comes from, but we've seen deterioration of that bridge because we didn't put any money into the repairing the damages of that bridge in the past. And we just said an engineer come out and say, yeah, this needs to be repaired. I just want to make sure it gets repaired. I don't want that be pushed back and it's going to cost us even more money to repair that.
So, being that we know we want it repaired regardless of the fund, can we move forward? Any other questions? Good? All right, can we move forward? Please, Director Wilson? And I'm going to say, if folks can just kind of hold before we leave, maybe we'll take a quick break at about like 9:15, so five minutes. Go ahead, Director Wilson, please.
Motor fuel tax, again, the one that jumps off the page is that transfer, but again, that's the, the transfer to help cover the cost for the final payment to, for the intersection program, whenever we get that invoice from IDAT. Other than that, there's nothing really significant in there. The one thing I will point out, though, on page 96, to Alderman E. Wesley's earlier question, the budget for salt, snow and ice control, which in the MFT is the salt, last year was 90,000. If you look at the trend over the last number of years, it's been no higher than 65,000, so that's the number we budgeted this year for salt based upon the way the bids have been coming in and our utilization. We did drop the, the salt purchase number down to more accurately represent the past few years' actual costs.
Got it. Any questions? Alderman E. Wesley?
How much are we planning, how much is this counter for?
Director Wilson?
Say, I mean, not to oversimplify, but the same tonnage that we've purchased in, in previous years, it's, it's a similar, similar construction of the contract.
So, my question is, why would we purchase more if we have so much left over that they're storing for us? If I mistake me, was storing for us last year what we didn't take from previous year?
Director York, talk about the overage and.
Yeah, so they had about 170 tons overage last year, that's been utilized. We have taken full, all of that 170 in. We are currently working off our current purchase of, I believe it was 90, 960 tons. We can take between 80% and 130% of that. So, we're trending on only be having to take the 80% of that and then purchase for next year, off of next year's, off of the 65,000. So.
65,000 would put us the same amount of salt we're purchasing?
Yeah, 65,000, I mean, this year's cost, I think, was $62-ish, something like that. 64, I think it was 64.95. So, that would give us 100, that would give us 1,000 tons.
And that's what we've been purchasing?
That's what, we, we've been, yeah, salt, I mean, if I could tell you how much salt we're going to use, I mean, we've told you this before, I wouldn't be working here, so. We try to write it between 911, or 91100-ish.
It's best practice, great. Alderman Jacob?
The streetlight maintenance, it seems like we were like 50, this year we're at 15,000, that's like a third and a half of where we're at normally. Now, we're doubling it again. What, what exactly are those streetlight mains, mains repairs? Are these light bulb changes or what exactly is this?
Director York?
Yeah, so, I mean, in the past, you had a lot more with light bulbs and stuff, now we're on LED. So, the LED boards, if the LED board goes out, we need a repair. If there's a fuse break, if there's a wire that's broken in it, something like that, that's more time-consuming and stuff that we have to have somebody come out and fix it, that's where that comes from. So, you know, it's 30,000, are we going to spend 30,000? You know, it's hard to tell.
Any other questions on the, for fuel tax? Let's move on. All right, why don't we take a quick break before we dive into the torgs and punts and lights spill over? Do you need to make a motion? Can you guys please make sure to be back no later than 9:20? Yes?